Okay, so hello everyone. This is Wage Reporting Live tonight. And what we're going to do is something really spectacular that we've never done before. We've taken the opportunity to lend our platform, educate Anton Wheeler, as well as Sharona Allen. And what we're going to do is we're going to be asking questions to the candidates who agree to come on and just use the platform to extend their voice and to let you know who they are. We often get questions about who's running, who should we vote for? Well, we don't want to tell you who to vote for, but we do desire to share our platform to give you the opportunity to meet the candidates personally for yourself. Now, there are several other candidates that actually are running, but they're not here right now. And that was by decision because everyone was invited. I know that some people had different things going on and they weren't able to make it. So with that being said, we're going to meet the candidates who were, and we'll be back with you shortly. If you haven't shared it already, share it because everybody in Newark should be voting. And this is where it starts, being educated on who the voters are. We'll be right back. Okay, guys, so we're ready to begin. And without any further ado, we're going to allow you to meet exactly who the candidates are. And we're going to allow them to introduce themselves to you. So we're going to start right away with ladies first. And you can simply share who you are. You might have to unmute. We can't hear you. Okay, let's see if another one of our candidates is able to speak so that we can hear them. Are you able to speak?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Hello, Tommy. I know.
Hello, hello, hello. Thank you so much, all of you, for having us here tonight and lending your forum and your space for us to share a little bit about ourselves and why this election is so important and why it's really important for people to vote. I know that Tawana was having some technical difficulties, so I'm excited for her to share her story as well and James. But my name is Thomas Luna. I am part of the Newer Kids Forward team, a four James Wright, a five Thomas Luna, a six Tawana Emery. And I'm running because education matters in our city. Education is the way that we ensure that the kids that we have today are able to take care of this city when we are not the ones on the street fighting anymore. And in the amount of time that I've spent here in Newark being a teacher, I know several things are true. One of them is that our kids, no matter what levels they're at, no matter the communities they come from, no matter the skills they possess, they can achieve if the standards are high enough, if you believe that they can. And I know that our families want their kids to succeed no matter what and are able to partner with our teachers and our school systems when they feel included, when they feel that they can actually, you know, voice their concerns and we can find happy mediums. And that becomes really important, right? And I share all that because I am not a stranger to education. This has been my entire adult life. I started teaching in the Bronx and then Elizabeth. And then for the last, what, 12, 13 years, Newark, New Jersey has been home for me. And this is where I teach. And then outside of teaching, I was a community organizer for Newark Educational Equity and Diversity. I worked with Sheila on a number of initiatives as well. We canvassed the city when we were making sure that we stayed a type-two district and so that the people could elect their representatives on the school board and not have an appointed school board. We passed 9120 when we wanted to be sure that there was a process that was community-driven and community-aspired when we had a vacancy on the school board. And on the state level, we were able to get the governor to sign Senate Bill 2826 concerning teacher shortages. It is no secret that the field right now is lacking very qualified people. And what we found out was that there was a number of barriers specifically for Black and Brown male teachers to get into our schools and be in front of our kids. And so we had to do something about that. And again, sharing, just to share receipts with anybody who doesn't quite know me yet, right? This has been my life, this has been my work. And running for the board is a way to continue that work in a way that brings in our community, that brings in the experience that I have, and brings in a trajectory and a voice to kind of future that we can. Education itself is an experience that we have to provide for our kids. And we have to ensure that we're including the community voices that have got us here this far. And for me, I believe that this team can do just that. We have phenomenal experiences, phenomenal stories, and we'll continue to dive into ideas and visions. But again, thank you for this time, and I'll definitely pass it over to James.
Absolutely. James?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Wonderful. Tommy started off strong, and hopefully Tawana can just go to end it off perfectly right after me. But thank you all for just giving us the platform tonight to just speak, express our voice and who we are as individuals on this team. First and foremost, for everyone watching, if you aren't aware, my name is James Wright Jr. I was born in the Central Ward, right in the city of Newark. I went to North Star Academy, graduated with the class of 2018, and proceeded to graduate in three years from Boston University. And I say that to say I understand the importance of education, especially for the youth. At the age of 14, although I started writing curriculum for North Star Academy's two high schools for AP Environmental Science, I started writing curriculum at the age of 14 with my father's nonprofit because we saw the importance of mentoring for our youth. And the reason we started mentoring stemmed from the loss of life. It was the loss of our students who weren't in the classrooms and how they were trying to figure out how to build a life for themselves, which leads them down the wrong path, utilizing the wrong resources, losing life at the end of the day. And so as Rob returned to teach, I want to express the message of having a foundation within education. And working along these two great individuals, Tawana with her special needs knowledge, as we're now in a space where special needs services, we need more knowledge. At the end of the day, instead of resources, we're going to get those in the future, but we need to understand how to use those resources first. In addition to Tommy's education with 13 years dedicated to Newark, that's just saying how we are a grassroots team dedicated to putting our citizens, our students first. And if there's always going to be an issue at the end of the day, but we are willing to come together to have a conversation, and the conversation is not held right now. And so thinking of a contract, if our community asks to reveal the needs or what are the specifics of the contract, then let's do it. And if in the schools, if our teachers say we lack resources, we need to hold a conversation with each other, what are the resources we require, especially after a pandemic? We are not aware when the next pandemic can occur, so we have to prepare starting right now, not 10 years later or three years later. And so that's just where our purpose is, Newark Kids Forward, focusing on just making sure there's fair compensation. At the end of the day, at least a conversation between the community, all stakeholders involved, and I make sure we're putting the students first. Just again, thank you for your time tonight, and hopefully we can have a great answer many questions for anyone watching.
Awesome. Listen, thank you for joining us. Thank you for lending a voice to the community. And now we'll hear from the next candidate.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys for having me. I'm Tawana Johnson Emery. Hi, Mr. Wheeler. How you doing today? I'm running on a platform of special needs. I'm a single mother with a special needs son with a neuro-muscular disorder. Going through the school system 12 years ago, when Demont Emery Jr. entered North Star Academy, there was no resources for him at that time. I had to partner with Rutgers University, well, now called Rutgers University, at the time it was University Hospital, to bring the services to the school so Demont can have OTPT and speech. If I didn't bring those services to the school at that time, Demont wouldn't be able to get those services. And when that happened to me, I realized other parents as well didn't have services. But because I brought those services to the school, not only did my son enjoy those services, but other students as well was able to enjoy the services. Because at the time, the school was not prepared to deal with a special needs student with a physical disability. And I want to be the voice for the parents out there who do not have a voice on the board for the Board of Education, to let them know that, hey, someone understands the complexity of being a special needs parent. I understand what it is to not be able to get evaluations, to not get resources, and then you have to advocate for yourself to get resources. So I'm running with Newer Kids Forward with Tommy Luna and James Wright Jr. to bring a voice to the special needs because sometimes special needs children are the forgotten students.
Okay, awesome. Listen, just kudos to you. I love when I see parents being active in our community. And with that being said, without any further ado, we're going to get started with these questions. We are so happy that we have so many people who have joined in. I'm going to ask that you share, again, like I said earlier, many people have questions. So we'll be entertaining some questions if they plug it in. And we have some, so I'm going to get started. And I think I'm going to start with ladies first, and then we'll just go backwards in that way. My first question is, do you support schools giving primary emphasis to teaching basic skills? Is something that we've gotten away from? Our test scores are down. For example, I'm specifically referring to reading, grammar, spelling, phonics, right? Do you guys support that? What do you think about that? Just give us your, you know, your opinion on that. A lot of parents want to know about phonics and cursive writing, basic skills. What are your thoughts on that?
I totally agree. I went to Catholic school. We did phonics, we did spelling, we did cursive. We had a book that we come home with, and we had to practice our cursive. My son now, he practices cursive on his own because they do not teach cursive in a classroom. They used to, but they no longer. I'm not sure why they took it out the classroom. But from a parent perspective, I would love that. That helps the kids achieve and thrive in school.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that response. Next, and we're just going backwards.
Yeah, I think, from what I understand, mind you, my background is STEM, so I teach everything math, everything science. But to the mantras of the new ways of teaching that we do, all teachers are literacy teachers. And from what I understand about literacy is that it is a very strategic and comprehensive approach. So phonics is a part of it, it's not the only part, because it helps with accuracy of reading, but not necessarily the comprehension behind it. So the metaphor that I've always used for literacy is like a rope, and each rope has a strand or a twine that makes up the entire rope. And one piece is phonics, one piece is comprehension, one piece is fluidity, one piece is rigor. And if those things are aligning together, then we will have something that is going to be beneficial to the student. To your point, we need to do basically anything right now that is going to help our students, right? The last test results told us that we have about 26% of kids who are passing ELA. Mind you, state tests are just one metric, it doesn't represent the whole student. But it also says something that only 26% of kids can access the types of questions that they are being asked. And I think that if we are going to truly fulfill our obligation on the Board of Education, achievement has to be number one, hands down. Because at the end of the day, we are promising kids and their families that if you join us in our schools and stick with us, that we are going to provide you with the education that you deserve. And right now, that is not happening.
Thank you, Tommy. Well said.
Yes, of course. And thanks for your question, just to piggyback off my team a bit. Also, just from the youth's perspective, right now, the question is, why am I, what am I going to do with what I'm learning? And so the important aspect is ensuring returning the basic skills, which offers the opportunity to show students, this is what it looks like, this is how you utilize a skill in the real world. Since I teach juniors and seniors, one of my common examples is a contract. Right now, many of our seniors or juniors who are 15, 16, 17 have a job, and they don't understand the importance of using your pen to highlight details in the text. And I tell them, if you have a contract and you miss the smallest detail, you can easily have a manipulation or allow your employer to manipulate you. And that's an example for older students, but there are other examples we can pull from for other age groups. And so that is a focus, making sure that not only looking at the numbers, but ensuring our students see, this is what the foundation education gives you and how you can use it. It is just up to you how you utilize it.
Very well said. Thank you so much for those responses. We greatly appreciate it. Now, the next question is going to come from also an educator, Sharonda Allen.
Hello, greetings. I am so grateful that all of you wonderful candidates were able to join this evening. It is very important for the community to understand who is going to be in the leadership in determining the direction of the youth in Newark. Our children are in crisis right now, I have to just say that in the recording, all over the country. But Newark kids were already in crisis, so they're further behind than a lot of other students. So I'm grateful that you're here to do this work. And in that vein, I wanted to know if you oppose some of these outside grants and wealthy special interest groups who come in, you know, with these foundations and different funding, I mean, with the state or the federal level, I'm sorry, who would set these particular agendas about smaller learning communities and diversity training, global citizenship programs? What is your perspective on when the district has to play to get paid? How do you feel about these sorts of funding programs?
I guess we'll start in reverse order. That's an excellent question. Thank you for asking that tonight. And my personal thoughts on that, and along with the team, they'll add, is when it comes to negotiations and how we got to the situation we are now, we forgot to place Newark first. And so whenever we're working with outside organizations, as long as we set Newark as the foundation, then the negotiation should, in terms of the result, benefit our city. And so when we take out Newark first, that is when other price tags, other concerns start to fulfill our minds, and our students become second to what the goal is. And so I believe just setting Newark first and establishing that foundation with every partner outside of Newark, because we understand our city is valuable, and others outside our city see that and want to manipulate. So we have to ensure that they're worried about our students and the history and prosperity of Newark. So setting Newark first.
Awesome. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, can we get Mr. Luna?
Yeah. I think one of the ways that I see that play out most, especially as a budgetary item within the district, is through consultants when it comes to professional development, right? I've been a teacher for over 10 years. I can tell you, professional development can often be the greatest waste of my entire time and my entire life. And the thing about consultants is that, especially when they like come out of state, all they have to do is tell us what to do, and then they leave. There's no follow-up. And yet, we have given them a check for multiple thousands of dollars at a time. And if you do that over time, that adds up to millions of dollars throughout a year, and that is not okay. And so the remedy for that on a policy level would be to what James was saying, investing in our own people. John Abigon, he is the president of the Newer Teachers Union. We don't often see eye to eye, but I will say, he had a great idea when he won his reelection. He said that instead of paying consultancy fees, we should highlight and shine light on our own teachers who are doing an amazing job in the classroom and have them lead some of this professional development. I'll add on to that and say, they should be leading most of the professional development, and we should be cutting them a check for the work and the service that they are doing to turnkey their vast amounts of knowledge to the people who are here in Newark and taking care of our own kids, right? I don't believe that we need so many outside consultants doing the things that they do. I don't believe that we need to send staff and administrators to exotic locations to do this kind of professional development on the taxpayers' dime. I think there are ways that we can capitalize on the people that we have here that have been doing a great job, make sure they are taken care of, AKA paid well, and learning from the best that are right here in the city.
I love that. Thank you so much. Let's also have Ms. Johnson, please.
Yes, I don't think, and to piggyback on both my teammates, I don't think that we should spend a lot of money outside source. I think the money should stay in the classrooms. And we should listen to, like Tommy Luna and James Wright Jr. stated, we need to not only get the principals, the assistant principals and the teachers, but also the students and the parents involved. So because we know what we need, because it's our city. Because it's our city, we can tell the parents, especially special needs parents, we can tell you exactly what we need and what we can do going forward.
Excellent. I like that. Thank you all so much for that. Thank you for your responses. And next, we're going to have a question from our one and only, Mr. Anton Wheeler.
What's up, guys? How y'all doing? Everybody's all right? Relax.
Doing great.
Relax.
A little bird from canvassing.
I see. First of all, let me say this. With respect to you all, I know that it takes a great deal of courage to get petitions filled out and to put your name on a ballot to run for office. You expose yourself to a great deal. And I just want to say, I'm proud of you all for doing that. I've worked with some of you before. Yes, Ms. Emery, yes, Demont Emery was my man. That was my buddy. You know, I still look at our pictures from DC. But I'm here as a journalist right now, so I have to ask very interesting questions. With respect to everything that you just said, I just want to look at this from a political standpoint. When you mentioned what John, the president of the Newer Teachers Union, said, well, of course, it would make sense because a check would be cut, and then his members would get the check, and then they would continue to go for him to be president. So somebody going to get paid somewhere, so let's just be honest about that. Also with the reality, to what Brother here said, Mr. Wright Jr., respect to you and your dad, man, I respect your father a great deal. But to weather what you were saying, please understand, we live in a city where the municipal council is 90% Black and Latino, and we still have a minority set aside. So, you know, the culture overall has to change. And it's not just about wanting power, it's about understanding when you're already in power, assuming that which is already there. My first question to you guys is this, and I'll just get it out of the way. Just recent, there was some issue with regards to the superintendent's contract. And what I'm just going to ask flat out based off to you, with the statistics you mentioned, right? For Newark Public Schools, and even I'll throw charters in there, if you're telling me that the best we could do was 56% on one side and 27% on the other, you're telling me that out of 20 students, only seven or eight kids could read or write. So I'm pissed at everybody. It's a whole hell of a lot of money. So are you telling me, do you believe that where we're at a 13% time nationally and the numbers overall across all boards, all right, are the way they are? Do you believe that $2.5 million contract renewal was justified? And do you believe that a $1.3 billion budget is justified?
I'll take that question.
With the caveat of preparing to ask the residents of Newark for over 30 years to float a billion-dollar bond, when in actuality, our bond capacity is junk at best?
To answer your question, no, I don't think that we should pay the $1 billion bond because I'm a homeowner. And being that I'm a homeowner, that means my taxes were raised. But not only that, that would price out our seniors. Because our seniors are homeowners, and they're on a pension, which is probably a small pension because they probably retired for a long time, and some of them on just social security. So to have that billion-dollar bond pushed on us would be outrageous. And it would be a financial burden on us, as well as the superintendent contract being renewed. I am totally against that the superintendent contract was renewed. I did not know about the superintendent contract renewal. I thought that when everybody else found out on the news outlet, and I was outraged. I could not believe that the board allowed that to go through unnoticed and unchecked. And we at Newer Kids Forward, we believe in transparency. We believe in having meetings, sitting down with our community, our stakeholders, our students, our parents, and discussing it. I don't think that with the achievement, the way that it is now with kids not learning and absentee, chronic absentee, that the superintendent contract should be renewed. I think that at that time, it should have been a conversation.
I'll follow up there and totally agree, right? Like, I am of the mindset that people do what you allow them to do, right? This board, this contract didn't just renew itself, it was allowed to be renewed, right? And I understand that there's some stipulation with some state law and contracts and all this other stuff. At the very basic denomination of transparency is the idea of putting anything on social media or telling 10 people to show up if you're, you know, really about this community of like, hey, at this meeting, we're going to be talking about the renewal of our superintendent. Can you please join us? I think at the very minimum is that you invite people to the very meeting that that's going to happen. At the very maximum, you have your separate own space, you know, on the MBOE's dime to invite community, have food, just like we did when we founded, when we got control and we're looking for a superintendent. They had events all over the city. You do that again, and you have honest discussions and roundtables with the people that elected you in that position. I think that, you know, that contract was allowed because the board didn't act, right? And I say that respectfully because, as you know, I have relationships with people on that board. And if we get elected, we have to work with them. But it was a misstep, and it's a misstep that cannot be allowed to happen again. And then what was further demoralizing as a community member was that at one of the meetings, Board Member Williams made a motion to put the brakes on all of that, and that motion died because of a lack of a second. So anybody who says that, oh, you know, I wasn't there when this happened, or we didn't know either, had an opportunity to pump the brakes, and they did not. And that is live, and you can look at that. There are several articles on Chalkbeat and Tap into that talk about that, that let us know. To go to the $1.3 billion budget, right? I think there are heightened needs that nobody else has except Newark, New Jersey. What I don't like is the return on investment that we are getting for our kids, right? Do I believe that every student should get every dollar? Yes, I do. But that is not happening. And it is clear that it's not happening because you have, you know, parent liaisons posting on Facebook about donations for a kindergarten celebration. You have, you know, parents, attendance counselors seeking if anybody can do donations to incentivize kids coming, et cetera. And I'm like, with the $1.3 billion, why are we begging our community for more money if the schools have so much, if we're, you know, making sure that kids have it? And the answer is because we're not, right? There's a mismanagement of funds that is happening, and we know that because we have the biggest budget besides the state of New Jersey. And at the end of the day, we're only getting 26% and 12% return on investment with the achievement levels that we have. We have to do better, and the way that we do that is we stop the status quo.
Wow. Very, very good, very well said. Listen, this offers an opportunity to educate the community as well. And like you said, a lot of people are not there. I'm very hugely interested, period, in the mismanagement of funds. And that leads me right into my next question. According to an article published-
Hold up, Mr. Wright has to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wright. I'm so sorry.
No problem. There's no problem. I just want to add, my team did a great job.
Sorry, Mr. Wright.
No problem. I just wanted to add that just one important thing is perspective. And we have to remember, at a set point in time, or first, the superintendent is, the contract totals up after completion of his years to almost $1 million. And so that's $1 million outside of our budget, not going toward students in the classroom. And so when one individual is paid $1 million while we have teachers and per diem workers that don't receive the bonus that they are promised to get them back in the classroom, that is an issue on transparency and management. And then perspective on before, the state just recently gave us control over our budget and school system. And so one of the reasons why the state removed our control is because of misuse of our budget. And so one of the concerns specifically in Newark is how we're utilizing our funds and whether or not it's focused on our students. And so just perspective and history is important to keep in mind for this matter.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Wright. So just to continue with that piece on continued just mismanagement of funds. According to an article published on November 22nd by NJ.com, board members and staffers splurged on lavish trips and conferences to locations such as Las Vegas, New Orleans, Orlando, Atlanta, Palm Springs, Puerto Rico, and Honolulu. According to travel expenses approved by the school board and posted online, what are your thoughts on such behavior with over a billion-dollar budget and with students not meeting academic goals or having- or having such limited options themselves to these types of trips or experiences? Um, I don't even know if they're attending real strong field trips anymore, um, that would expand their personal, social and academic development. Again, and we're gonna start with mom and work our way around. Like, what are your thoughts on that and would you intervene in that situation and how?
Yes, I would intervene. If the kids are not going on trips and the school going away, because I, I don't remember the last time I showed them went on a trip. So if our, if our children are not going on trips, I don't think the board should be going on any trips. And not only that, that means that you're taking money from the classroom. And that means you're taking money from special needs students because I, and like you know, special needs students do not have the resources that they need. So if any money that's going on trips should be going back to the school to make sure these students have one, an aid, one-on-one aid that says in the IEP, getting evaluations and getting their resource and their related services. So when you think about someone taking a trip, unless these Newark Public School students are taking a trip, you don't take a trip either.
Come on, mom, and this is what we need, we need that mom advocacy. Thank you for that. Tommy?
Um, yes, no, I, I mean, great, great question. Um, I, look, there, there, there is a place for development, right? Conferences, what have you, I don't think Honolulu's it. I don't think Palm Springs is it, right? I think there's a lot of things that happen in and around the state. I know that because I've gone to some of these things in our own state or in New York. And so the, 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 um, um, like, farthness of those seemed really extravagant. Um, and so the way that you curb that is, in the budget, there is a line item for travel, specifically from central office. And my role as a board member would be to reduce that amount, um, and say, "Hey, yes, professional development is important and we're gonna reduce it, so you need to be really careful where you're going." And if you put the squeeze on that line item, then we wouldn't have so many people going so many different places at the expense of taxpayers, right? Because if you offset that budget and shrink it, that frees up a little bit more money that we could put into school gap budgets, which are the budgets the principals control. Or you could centralize it even more and add another trip that the district pays for. Right now, uh, to my knowledge, the district K through twelve pays for three different trips, right? They, they take the cost of that so that a kid goes on at least three trips. That is what was presented at the, at the budget hearing. Um, what I would like to see happen is more of it, right? One of the experiences that I have at my school was that I would plan the trips for my grade level team. Uh, and I made sure that we got to go to places, um, that, that weren't around here. Places like the Guggenheim Museum, places like the Natural History Museum, places, um, we had like an etiquette dinner at this really fancy restaurant one time and the philosophy behind that is that we want our kids to know that the world beyond Newark is not beyond them. And if we can give them those experiences, then we are providing them with the educational experience that we know that they deserve and will often benefit from. But it takes priority and on a board level, the priority, uh, you'll see what is prioritized based on what is allocated in the budget. And our stance is that it should go to kids and kids first, then everybody else second.
Excellent, well said. You know, I just love the round responses from this team, how it's made up of teachers, when people say the teachers don't get involved. You are involved, this is the highest level, right? Of, of sacrifice for your kid, it's in working with parents, all of the things that they, they say we should do. Um, involving our young people, our students, I, I love the makeup of this team. Thank you for that, Mr. Wright, um, you have anything you want to share?
Yeah, they, they pretty much said it all, but just to add to my team, I think just importantly, making sure that we're placing the students first. And right now, we have to remember, forty percent of our students are either chronically or severely chronically not in the schools that we're ensuring are open. So we can pay for trips and trips are an excellent way to show students the important, the importance of education, especially thinking of college trips. That's what I remember growing up, that's literally showed the importance of what we're doing in the classroom, how it translates to the real world, and even seeing college students in their day-to-day experience coming from environments just like us. But just ensuring that students are at the foremost of all of how we're spending our money. And just, if our students aren't even in the classroom in our city, we have no business going to other places outside of professional development, exhausting our own, our limited expenses.
Absolutely, thank you for that, guys. Charonda?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm loving the responses, uh, with all this fiduciary accountability. So this next question has a lot to do with, um, the accountability. According to a New Jersey advanced media for NJ.com article, which was published on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, ethics complaints were filed on four board members with at least one that is up for reelection. Some of the facts are, the North Board of Education will pay lawyers two hundred eighty-five dollars an hour plus expenses to defend these members. The board members didn't even realize that they were supposed to have their own lawyer and have been going along with the superintendent's board attorney. Were you, were any of you aware and what were your thoughts? And, uh, as, as board members, uh, what would you have done differently in terms of knowing and understanding your rights and responsibilities as a board member? And I'm just gonna say, as public officials, when something goes wrong, you have the duty to report things. And also, I wanna point out in this recording, the Government Accounting Office of the State of New Jersey, when things are not being dealt with or handled, uh, ethically, financially, you can report these, these actors to the GAO, Government Accounting Office. So, um, what is your response? Uh, did you know anything? What would you have done differently in, in terms of holding folks accountable or responding or react, reacting to these ethical faux pas?
Yes.
James, yes, yeah.
Yes, of course, we're specifically aware about that number two eighty-five per hour for a lawyer. And that's just, again, another example of how we're not properly utilizing our funds. But even so, we have, um, plenty of issues to focus on within our school system. How we, whether or not our students are learning, which is the utmost important issue that we need to tackle. But we cannot worry about our school officials if they are ethical while managing the budget and policy that affects the minds of our students in the generations to come. I always say, we have to remember, the next generation is one day gonna take care of us. And so we have, while we're preparing them, ensuring that we're instilling the morals, the lessons that we learned growing and the ones we wanna add as well. And that includes ethical, how you utilize the power, with great power comes great responsibility. And that starts simply within our school system and how our kids view us. And so if our students do not view us as ethical, that is an issue right there. And so it starts at the, with holding ourselves accountable and just evaluating how we're using our resources within the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Definitely, definitely agree with what, um, James said there and, uh, want, want to add a few things. One is that, um, you know, to the, the reporters that took this on, it is very clear, um, to see through ab- uh, abstention votes, uh, you know, which, which board members, uh, this is pertaining to. And the larger issue here is that the state of New Jersey's code, eighteen A, I believe it's in the forty-nine series, because that, that, that's a very large set of laws. But I believe the forty-nine series stipulates that, um, that when ethic complaints are brought up or, yeah, when ethical plates are brought up, the district takes on the cost, right? I think that's a terrible law. I think that if the district's gonna take on the cost, there needs to be a vote so that we can hold board members accountable to the types of law, uh, to the types of attorney's fees that they are putting up, right? There, there's, there's no, because it's set in state law, that is what has to happen. Now, to James's points, I wish our board members were acting ethically to begin with so that this didn't have to be litigated and we don't have to send money to courtrooms and take it out of classrooms. But unfortunately, uh, the law, the way that the law is stipulated says that we have to do that. Now, I think either way, I would recommend a policy in the nine thousand series, which is the bylaws of the board, that every time we'd have to hire a lawyer for ethics charges, there has to be a vote, right? Because even though the state doesn't guarantee it or require it, I think we should. And if we make it part of our bylaws, that means we would have to. That is the kind of accountability that I would want for our community so that you can know who exactly is voting to use taxpayer dollars and student dollars to provide attorneys for the board in the event that they act unethically. I think that either way, there is questions about leadership, about transparency, about fiduciary responsibility that have to be answered by those board members and our district, uh, that we can a- ask and have them answer once we are elected to the board. And it's something that is really important to highlight and shine light on because we have to say that that is unacceptable. And the way that you solve a problem is you start by naming it. So I'm really glad that you brought that up because it is important.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I was aware of that two eighty-five number, yes, like my, my team was. And all I can say that from a parent point of view, it's not going to the special needs student. You know, because special needs student, they need resources.
Okay, okay, so that's fair. Um, you know, and so with that being said, we're gonna pass the next question.
Um, just in the, uh, area of fairness to you all, um, in the area of fairness to all my friends that are lawyers, the average lawyer, um, and if that's a basic decent one, um, you can look it up, the average billable hour right now for a lawyer is four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Um, second of all, with respect to what it is that you're saying, um, second of all, the reason why those, um, ethics complaints, the way they're structured and why they say that they are, I'm not justifying them or anything, I'm just giving you a little history. Um, the reason why they're that way is because anyone can do a frivolous charge against you, like some people believe these current board members are under now. And if it's a frivolous charge, um, then the, the governing body, um, that the charges are being brought under, um, that they said that they should recoup the fee. So that's a little history about that and where that came from. Um, and the, uh, again, my point, um, is, speaking about all of this stuff, um, with, you know, we talk about fiduciary responsibility, capacity and all of those things, people acting unethically and things of that nature. Um, there have been a number of things that have been hidden, um, from the public, um, secret settlements, um, things of that nature, um, some perceived double dipping, um, with regards to, um, a certain law firm, um, uh, uh, being the law firm of, of, of the former law firm of the current, um, legal counsel, um, for the board. Um, and just the manipulative guise, um, that the superintendent is more powerful than the board itself. Um, what is your, what do you guys take on that and, you know, how do you feel, um, about your responsibilities? And what do you view your responsibilities are as board members relative to the superintendent doing their job? Because at the end of the day, um, you know, you have a couple of board members whose parents work for the board or relatives work for the board. So could they properly evaluate the superintendent or do they have to recuse themselves? Um, those are things that, you know, we need to think about and we need to look at. Um, and, you know, uh, I just wanna get your take on that.
We'll start with Mr. Luna.
Ooh, okay, yes. Uh, being in the middle, I've always like, I always have to wait for one of them to start, this is, this is nice. Um, now, I mean, the, the, the role of a board is that the superintendent is your employee, right? The, the, the Board of Education has only one employee, that is the superintendent, right?
They got a lot of incumbents?
Yeah. The Board of Education, the board members have one employee and that is the superintendent. And your job is to hire, fire, evaluate that superintendent, pass the budget, make sure it's sound, and then pass policy, right? Um, tho- those are the three requirements. And I think to your point of the way that the board has operated was the other way around. At least from the perspective that I've been in as someone who goes to tons of board meetings, if not all of them, right? And I think the way that you fix that is, is, is what you said. Uh, right now, Board Member Thomas, uh, has a motion and, and it's moving through to get the board their own attorney. I think that is paramount. I think that is paramount because if you are relying on the attorney that the superintendent hired to represent the district, the representation isn't quite fair. Because you are not, that attorney is playing two sides of, of the same coin, so to speak, right? And that doesn't give for the fairness of litigation that needs to happen or the sound advice that should happen of an independent board who is making independent decisions on behalf of the students and families of North, right? And so I think, one, understanding that role is really, really, really clear. And I think, two, once you do understand that role, you're able to provide the, um, the boundaries that are needed to, to say things like, "No, Mr. Superintendent, you can't do that." Or, "Two, this is what I need you to do," right? One of the things that, um, you know, I, my background with the board, specific around organizing is policy, is that there is a policy, um, on the books right now. It's in the nine thousand, uh, six thousand series, uh, which is about, uh, achievement and instruction. And it's, um, six thousand, the policy number is six thousand ten subsection I. And subsection I says that every year, the board is required, or should be required, to provide a set amount of metrics, goals, achievements, milestones that they present to the public annually, I think the word was annually, um, that they use for their agenda. As far as I know, that has not happened in a very long time. And I think allows for the kinds of things that we see where we're just moving but not quite sure what the direction is. And I think that if we can adhere to that policy and start every single school year with, "Mr. Superintendent, these are the goals that we wanna see happen, these are the metrics of how we want them to happen, and these are the, um, you know, milestones that we wanna see occur in our district." We can get, we can know the direction we're going instead of at the end of the year being surprised by all of these terrible statistics. I think we have a lot to do as a board and I think it starts with knowing your role really, really well and knowing the policies that govern you as a board member.
And you indeed are knowledgeable, awesome. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go next. So with the superintendent in mind and the board, I think that the superintendent is running the board. And the board is sitting back allowing the superintendent to do as he, as he pleased. And I think, like, and to Tommy's point, the board does have one employee, that's the superintendent. And I think we need to bring back transparency and the board needs to be more active and like Tommy said, bring more boundaries to the superintendent so that we don't have those type of relationships. And some of the board members work for a councilman. So do, so we have two, we have two people, the council and the board. And it can get murky because we don't know what agenda you have. But with Newark Kids Forward, there is no agenda. We all have jobs, we're not seeking higher position, nor are we seeking to work for the city hall. So when we come into the office on day one, we are working for the kids, for our community, for our stakeholders. We're not bound by anybody. When we make a decision, we can send a decision on our own accord as opposed to a decision that maybe our council or Ethan or, or councilmen or whoever you're working for the city, they're not in our ear. We can utilize our mind.
Mom, that was an excellent response. I, I think is, it was profound and the community needs to understand how important it is to have independent voices that can truly represent them.
And also, that, that sounds like a conflict of interest. And there needs to be real accountability for those conflicts because if people are not able to fulfill their duties on the Board of Education because of their municipal affiliations, then they either need to recuse themselves and, and resign from the board or resign from that municipal job position. And it should be demanded. Mr. Wright?
Yes, thank you. My team hit all the key points, just speaking on transparency again and responsibility to evaluate superintendent. But to also remember, as Tawana mentioned, school, North School Board members are not paid. This is a volunteer position. And so passion and purpose is what drives us to acquire this seat and to ensure that our students are learning at the end of the day. And I recall from a New Jersey Spotlight interview with, uh, Superintendent Roger Leon, "And when the question was presented, 'Are you willing to open up discussion again with the community about your contract?'" Already demonstrating, "Okay, the past has already happened, but what are we willing to do to move forward?" And there's no accountability. There was wa- wa- talking in circles when easily we can say, "Yes, let's have a conversation." If it's about our students and our kids in the school system, then why is this such an issue to just simply hold a conversation or elect a meeting to- Or elect a meeting to where we ensure definitely our community members are there. And we're pushing the message, is this what our community wants, not what just Roger wants or what the board wants? And so just going back and showing we're placing our students first. And that if a position is not paid for and an individual is driven by passion and purpose. There is nothing willing to control them from making sure that the students that they're fighting for are placed first.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you. The next question will be from Shon.
Okay, so I know personally that regardless of what the school district does. Having academically rich home environments are very important. Excuse me. What sorts of activities would you suggest to help the parents with maybe their academic difficulties? Or supporting their academic support of their students? As far as like more PTA meetings dealt with their skills or to teach them how to do like better parenting or improved parenting tactics? Such as setting a bedtime and nutrition because many of our young people can't perform academically because they are malnourished. They eat a lot of crap, but there's not a lot of nutrition. So what are some of your suggestions? And I'll start with, uh, Mr. Wright.
Yes, thank you for your question again. I think one of the simple solutions is ensuring we're holding the conversation. One of the efforts by the current board administration is what the parent engagement tour. And one of the things Tommy and I noticed while visiting the parent engagement tour was the constant blame on parents. Parents aren't showing up, they are not here. Well, we understand it's difficult and yes, to a certain degree, want to ensure our parents involved. But we don't understa- we don't know what our parents' life day to day looks like. And so we have to ensure we're extending the olive branch, looking for new inventive ways to make sure parents are involved. Sending out weekly newsletters. Hey, here are ten tips of what you can do this week to ensure your students healthy and prepare for the week. Showing we're all in this together and building mentorship and tutoring programs. Exterships and internships that involves local community leaders and members that utilize school skills as well as career skills in their everyday life and can give it to, teach it to students. And these are also parents who have their own children in the school system. And so recognizing the areas in our community that connect and intersect and building upon that to build a better for ourselves.
Thank you so much, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Mr. Luna?
Um, yeah, to, it's phenomenal question, right? The, the amount of doors that we have knocked on and especially our parents with students who are in high school. And, you know, they know that their kids need help and need services and support. And they're like, I don't know what to do, I don't know where to start, right? I, I think that's an issue and it is a trend that has come up over and over throughout this campaign as we have talked, um, with, with parents across the city. And I, I think the, the way that you solve it is, is multi-pronged, right? Um, I think, one, is as, as schools, we have to get on the same page about, uh, parent involvement and, and support and engagement, right? Um, to, to James's point, right? The, the number of excuses of why parents don't come out to like a parent engagement tour was like, oh, they work. Whereas I know that, you know, at, um, uh, it's one of the schools in the North Ward, their principal had over five hundred parents come out. I'm like, why, why is it possible for one principal to do it, but not others? And then when it comes to others, it becomes excuses, right? I, I don't think that is the way forward. It is a way, but I don't think it's the way forward if we're gonna be real about engaging with our parents. Um, and so I, I, I think double downing on how we can build off of, uh, effective strategies to engage parents for the principals who are doing it well. Because it's not just that one. Uh, I know Avion Avenue School Principal Lopes over there is doing some amazing things, um, with his staff and his, um, families. And it's something that we could, um, that we could really learn from. I think second is figuring out what kind of decision-making power we are giving parents, right? Last night at our debate, I, I, I talked about the difference between, you know, being empowered, which I, I absolutely hate versus being in power and actually being able to make a decision. One of the things that we were working on with need before the, um, before COVID hit was trying to figure out how we can require certain amounts of budgets to go to schools as long as parents were sign off. Ten percent of your families had to say yes to this or something to give that kind of power and ability to our parents to make those decisions. And then the last one is like, like a just person to person, human to human social interactions to talk about the things that, that you brought up. I know at my school, we start the year off with a parent-only barbecue, no kids. You're not allowed to bring your kids, it's just adults of our school community so that you can get to know each other. You can change, exchange numbers, social media, et cetera, to keep in contact, especially with kids in the same grade as yours. Um, and that has been super beneficial, um, throughout the year as we have sought to build some bridges with our families. And I think though, it doesn't have to be complicated, it doesn't have to cost a lot of money. Uh, i- it's just basic human interaction that we need and a belief that our parents do want to be involved, can be involved. And it brought to the table can be really productive to the kinds of, uh, you know, conversations and visions that we have for our schools.
Awesome. So thank you, I'm gonna add, Mr. Luna, that when you talk about the wards, you also have to look at demographics, culture, socioeconomics, family makeup. How many have two-parent households where one parent can come and, and take the load off of another? And also how people have been treated over the years to feel like they don't even feel very welcomed in a school. So we can't always compare a North Ward to a Central Ward, to a South Ward, to an East Ward school or principal. Because, you know, you gotta look at the bigger picture because there are some schools in the North Ward that are blue ribbon. And then you can say, well, how did they get to be blue ribbon? And maybe the parents are excited because they, it makes it look like they're in a winning school and they wanna go and be in the photos because the school is winning. But, you know, there's a lot of factors to it. But I love what you said, we have to engage all parents, all schools, find out what those principals are doing to keep them engaged. And maybe we need to get some of these hometown heroes, these local celebrities to come and people will show up when they know there's a big name.
Good points, Ms. Wright, I mean, Ms. Emery, I'm sorry.
When I was president of parent council during my time at eight years at my son's school, I think that, and, and thinking from a parent point of view. Parent council does help with engagement because I was engaging with a lot of parents. I actually used to do bus trips to New York to Broadway shows with the kids, to Universal Studio, to the Big Apple Circus, take them out to dinner. A Broadway show and a dinner. And how I was able to do that, it's with sitting down, talking to parents. Having parents in my house hosting barbecues and dinners and parties and getting them excited about being engaged in the school. And then I took it from bringing it in my house and bringing it back into the school. And when we had, uh, performed at the school, I would do concession stands. And they knew that with the concession stand, we had the good food. And they would come in, get the food and then also come see their scholar perform. So I think that having a parent council can help with the parent engagement. And I think we need to bring parent councils or PTAs back into the school system so that there can be a voice out there from a parent's point of view to engage. Because the one thing I'm good at is engaging parents and bringing them together cohesively. When my son graduated, um, from the fourth grade, going to the fifth grade. I did a big barbecue for every graduate, every graduate in that class. There's three classes. I paid out of my own personal market and every parent came, the school came and we were engaged. We were engaged and sometimes we have to think outside the box. We cannot think inside the box. Yes, some parents will not be engaged, but those parents are not engaged, you can potentially ask them, what do you need? What support do you need? Because I remember a student, um, well, few students, I have bought clothes for. I asked the parent, is everything okay? I took the kids, I took them by the whole summer outfit, well, not outfit, the whole summer clothes for the whole year. You buy a shoe, you ask the parent, or you can look at a student and see, hey, it's no problem over there. And I would ask administrator, go in there, get their size. I'll go buy a shoe or I'll go buy a coat. One time I was able to see that there was a need for coats. And I asked my friends and family, do anybody got any old coats? And I brought it to the school. Um, it's just, I guess in closing, I say, parent council can help with that. PTAs can help with that. It's just a matter of how do you engage the parents? It's by having parents engage in them.
Yeah, okay, very good, thank you. And, um, we support that, right? Because we want parents to be organically involved and not chosen by people who work at the school. Um, so that's good stuff. But that, the next question is gonna come from Mr. Anton Wil.
Um, you know, uh, first of all, uh, thank you all. Uh, we've been on for a little over about an hour now. Um, I thank you for your time. I know there's a lot more you could be doing. Um, and, uh, I, 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 I promise I won't hold you because the next two questions I have after the, the round of, uh, is definitive. Uh, it'll, it'll let me know what you're saying. So, um, question one, um, is we, the past three and a half years have been unprecedented and it's something that I don't think. Um, unless we have a younger Dryas impact, I don't think we'll ever experience life like we just did these three and a half years. Um, you know, uh, 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 and there were some questions about how things were handled. Um, a lot of good people lost their jobs. Um, a lot of good people, um, lost their lives. However, uh, what we find out now, um, with regards to, uh, new research, um, data that is produced and data that was suppressed. Um, our government, um, misrepresented some things to us. Um, and which caused one of our most vulnerable populations to be harmed, which are our children. Um, it's coming out now from the CDC that shutting down schools did nothing to curb the, the spread of COVID. Masks did nothing to stop the spread of COVID. Um, vaccinations did nothing to stop the spread of COVID or, uh, stop transmission as they originally said they were gonna do. Um, now we're down to the point of where we're talking about it stopped hospitalization. But I know people who have been vaccinated a- a- and caught COVID again and ended up in the hospital. Um, so, well, my question to you is, what do you guys feel about mandates? Um, and, uh, will you be a part of that? Understanding that, um, well, whatever my government says, uh, I'll do. Um, you know, I, I, I mean, uh, the Tony Fauci name was like, it was on everybody, it was in everybody Rolodex. Like everybody was talking about Fauci this, Fauci that, like they had his personal number in their cell phone. So my thing is clearly lockdowns didn't work and our kids were harmed for it. What do you think should be done to rectify that? Now, if you want, before you answer, I could, I'll go on a share screen or, and I'll pull up the data. Now, I could do that. So what I'm saying to you clearly now, it is reported, locking kids out of school did nothing to help them to stop the spread of COVID amongst them. You're even going back on now saying whether or not kids should be vaccinated. So what I'm asking you is, the level of authoritarian means with which this pandemic was handled, how do you feel about it?
And again, guys, this is just your opinion, it's an opportunity to let the community know who you are and what you think about, you know, such issues.
Um, this question is near and dead to me because I work for the City Transit Authority. We lost four hundred and some odd members to COVID and we had the mandate, uh, about vaccination. And some people on my job lost their job because they didn't get vaccinated or they didn't get the medical. And at that time in twenty twenty, uh, a matter of fact, it was March of twenty twenty, uh, that we had these, uh, information coming out and I, you know, we were not aware of what COVID is and what COVID could do. I worked through the whole pandemic, sixteen hours a day, six days a week. And I had my mask, I had my, um, disinfected. Do I think that people should have lost their job because they did not get vaccinated? No. Because NYPD, FDNY sanitation sued. And not only did they get their job back, they got back pay. Because the information that was out there, we were learning in real time. So although we can say on Monday morning quarterback, yes, you know. We, we shouldn't have lost our jobs at that time, but at, in real time, we didn't know how this pandemic was going. And being a first, first, seeing firsthand how I was sitting next to my coworker on a Monday. On Tuesday, that person didn't come to work and on Wednesday, we learned that the person died. Every week we were learning, three times, three times in a week, uh, uh, people were dying. So for every week, we lost about averaging three to four people in a week. I am glad that all those people who did lose their job, they get their job back with back pay.
But who hasn't?
Hindsight, hindsight, you know, going forward. I don't think that people should have lost their job. I think that you should have been tested because my job, uh, you know, at the end, my union sued the New York City Transit Authority. And they had to end up doing weekly testing. And you had to come up with your test. If you didn't take your weekly test, then, then you couldn't work until you take your test. But I don't think that you should have lost your job because we have religious and medical health reasons.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Emery. Uh, Mr. Wright?
Yes, of course. I believe one of the important issues that was missing during the time of the pandemic again was communication. And one of the important steps or responsibilities as a leader, I believe, is to be a servant leader. And with being a servant leader, that's understanding that your people are most important first. And so during the pandemic, I think back to when students were pushed out of schools and everyone was at home. And everyone started, the students that you started to, uh, going to Branchburg Park and all the core street and all the basketball courts around the city. And we had to take down the nets to just ensure they couldn't gather and congregate in tight areas. But that just goes to show our community, after seeing the stats, after the fact, they were just trying to figure out a way to make it to the next day. And if we focus more on working together rather than creating lo- long-lasting effects on people's careers, fam- jobs. We have to understand the perspective of science is not the same across the board of everyone. And so acknowledging that we'll rather have a conversation. And it, although it is tough during a pandemic, I think back to Hurricane Katrina. We should have learned from then, no matter what, we have to make sure we help our, rather than push them away. Because once we find a solution to the ban pandemic, here we are in a more divided time than ever. And so we don't have communication ensuring that we aren't pushing anyone out to the curb. We aren't just focusing on one specific portion of our population that everyone's included. That's the goal, so communication, I believe, not just forcing or just making one decision and forcing, forcing everyone on one side. It's about communicating the best result.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wright. Tommy?
Yes, um, definitely agree with my, my, my running mates here on everything that they said. And, um, you know, to, to add and not, not beat a dead horse here is the, the, the path. What, what irked me most about that is that when we did reopen, there was this like charge to get back to quote unquote, normal. And that irked me because I was like, normal was never good enough. Like, why are we getting back to a status quo that kept so many people out, kept our kids behind? And then it's no wonder why right now, being a year reopened, we're at where we are right now. Now, I understand that there are a lot of impacts, right? But what I reject right now is the using COVID as a blame for why things aren't changing. Because right now, we, we, it, we have local control of our community. And you can't tell me we won't act fast because when we had to pivot to online, that was the fastest I've ever seen New York Public Schools move. That was the fastest I've seen the state of New Jersey move. So don't like, when, when they're saying, oh, we can't because COVID did this and that, I was like, that's an excuse. At this point, it's an excuse to not act. It's an excuse to, to, to react towards the status quo and not dream of anything bigger. And I think the last thing that any kids need as leaders, rejecting possibility and trying to adhere to a status quo that was never good enough to begin with. So I definitely agree with my running mates and I think we have to do better. And the way that you do that is by rejecting the status quo, not using COVID as an excuse and just doing better by kids all the time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, thank you. So we just have two more questions and then we're gonna close out. Um, my question is this, there was an article that came out just a couple of hours ago and the article is entitled, "North Board of Ed Race Pits Incumbents Against Challengers With Charter School Ties." I think this is very misleading, right? Um, but I wanna hear from you. You know, I'm gonna say that, that just for some background, the last gubernatorial election that we had here, uh, I, I, they plastered. Uh, I, I, they plastered, you know, trunk signs all over the place, right? To confuse people. Um, I used to be a staunch person just against, um, hostile takeover of charter schools. Um, I was a huge advocate for getting local control back into the hands of our city. Um, after just seeing the corruption and someone mentioned it earlier, the same corruption that got our schools taken away to begin with. I'm definitely no longer just public schools for a ton of reasons that I'm not going to go into because tonight this is your platform. I want to know what each of you think and what you would say to the listening audience as it pertains to this charter versus public school situation. You cannot continue to say that we don't want charter schools. You can't con- continue to create this divide, right? When the kids are not learning to read or write. We literally have people matriculating into colleges where they're now on fourth and fifth grade level. If, and these people feel that they're getting an education and they're trying to mentor our young. So we can't keep saying that, but that's just my opinion. So I'm going to ask you, what is your opinion and what do you say to our community? That is still just not in a space where they're not saying, oh, it's charter versus public because we're not there. But what do you guys think? And we can start with who I would like to go first.
I think I just, that question is really personal to me since I was a former, former student among many who attended a charter school. And we never understood the divide between a charter school and public school. Yes, we understand the history and how charter schools entered the city. But we also have to understand the demographic within the schools. At the end of the day, we just wanted a chance to make it to college or an opportunity to be the person we wanted to see in ten years. I started, I joined North Star Academy in two thousand and ten. It was a lottery system. It wasn't specifically chosen who entered the school. And there's a set, a limit. We're the largest city in the state. Every other district has one public high school. If you look at Barona, Barona has one high school. If you look at Irvington, Irvington has one high school. Snork has over fifteen plus high schools because of how large our city is. And so we have to adapt and adjust. And so when thinking about that demographic and we hear charter versus public, all I think about is the student that wants to be a doctor. The student that wants to go and learn a trade and they're using the tools with the right in front of them to get there. Some students don't make it to the next day. Right now, the CDC also released an article about PTSD affecting inner city youth. That is because of the daily crime they have to experience. And so that distracts them the ability, thinking of noise pollution, which reduces reading rates as well, as well. When you hear a siren ringing through your ear versus the suburban community where you might not hear that as much. And so it's important to understand the impact on our children. And while we're creating the divide, we're just dividing ourselves. Because when our students graduate, it's not about what's, it's a charter or a public school, a private school. It's about the city that you came from. And I think we forget that. Because everyone else is looking at our city as a valuable source to enter and pry all the joy and potential out of it. While we're sitting here getting pushed to the side and it starts within our schools and ended the divide. All of our students just want to see the next day, whether it's trade, whether it's college. They just want to become the next productive citizen to be an example for their family and those following them. And so my position is that we are not a charter slate. I chose to return to teach at a charter school because I graduated from there. And I have plenty of other students that I can show you serve as an inspiration and want to follow through from the area that they came from. So let's end the divide and put our students first.
Thank you. Love that too. Thank you, Mr. Right. That was awesome. Mom?
When I was growing up, it used to be Catholic school versus your traditional public school and I went to Catholic school. Now my son is in school. It is charter school versus traditional public school. Last time I checked, charter school is a free public school. And we need to stop the versus charter versus traditional because these are Newark kids. And that's why we want a Newark kid forward. We are representing all Newark kids. Whether you go to a charter school, a traditional public school, a private school, a Catholic school, an independent school. You are a Newark kid. And if we stop that conversation on charter versus traditional and talk about our Newark kids as they focus on our Newark kids. We can, like my, like my teammate says, stop the background noise and focus what's in front of us, which is Newark kids.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate that response. Tommy?
Yes, um, so I saw that article too, um, and it was written by Steve, who, who I know well and, um, you know, with all respect to him, I know that there are several reporters who like clickbait. Um, and so when I saw that headline, I was like, Steve, it, what, what, what do you actually mean when you say that, right? Is it because we, we have a parent whose kid goes to a charter school? Great. Uh, another slate has that too. Uh, what this slate doesn't have is charter money. Um, it is no secret who funds the mayor's slate. Uh, you just need to look at Great Schools for All, which is a political action committee chaired by Kyle Rosengranz. Um, and you can follow that money and that is what funds the mayor's slate. There is no secret about that because they have to give everything on elect. And you can look at chalk beat articles that, that note that you can look at tap into and NJ.com articles as well. I believe last year, uh, Great Schools for All sent the, the mayor's team like ninety thousand dollars. Um, and so for me, I'm just like that, that, you know, that, that is more tied closely than, than any of us are. But, but bigger than that, right? When, what, what we're talking about, um, is that I find that most people still keep that debate alive because it creates a little bit more chaos and chaos can be a ladder for some folks, uh, in order to have a platform, right? I, I totally understand from years of going to school board meetings and connecting with friends and neighbors. That the way charter schools came about in our city was something that was, was not done the right way, right? Well, a lot of folks in our community found out that these kinds of schools were coming to Newark by watching Oprah and seeing it happen with Cory Booker and Mark Zuckerberg, right? That is, that is not the way you bring about changes to a community. And I get that that is a very sore place for a lot of people that call Newark home. And, right? A- and it, 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 it is, uh, we're at a place now where charters are part of the fabric of our community that we have, that families have the ability to choose what kind of schools they want their kids to go to. And that is wonderful if and only if every single school provides an opportunity for all kids. And that is a piece that is missing. And my contention and, and my team would agree is that a large piece of why that is missing is because of the mismanagement of funds. Right? You, there are so many lawsuits and, and appeals motions coming out of the district to stop expansion, to rebuy back sold buildings, to do all of this frankly nonsense that sends hundreds and thousands of dollars into the courtroom system, out of the classroom system. And then we wonder why there's not enough. I would rather have our district focus making each and every single school a viable option for every single family instead of looking at the competition and trying to match their every move, right? Imitation i- is suicide, I believe, is, is the saying. And we can't pretend that we're going to get better simply by suing the daylights out of the charter sector at our, at, in our own city. We're not going to pretend that we're going to get better by taking money out of our schools and putting it into the court system. That is not how it works. What I would rather see is all that money being put back into schools so that we offer more AP classes, more extracurricular activities, more tutoring services, more enrichment services, more field trips, things that are going to create an educational experience that changes people's lives. Because suing a school is not going to do that. And parents just want to be sure that when they send their kids to schools, that they are in a safe location that is doing right by them and giving them the best opportunities possible.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. With that being said, we're going to move to the last question of the evening and that question is going to come from Anton Will.
Um, l- l- once again, thank you all for your time. Um, you know, uh, I appreciate, um, your responses to the questions. Um, you know, uh, I, I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule. Um, and like I said earlier, I know it's very, uh, challenging, um, especially running against the machine and not having any money and things of that nature. But I'm, I'm just, you know, grateful that you decided to put your names and your hats in the ring and decide to run for office because you believe in what it is you want to do. Um, with that being said, my, my final question to you guys is that, uh, we talked about a one point three billion dollar budget. We talked about a proposed notion of over a thirty year spread, uh, supposedly a, a referendum or something maybe axed a float a bomb for one million dol- one billion dollars over thirty years. Um, and I'm just saying to you, um, uh, uh, and, and the story for charter schools when they came here thirty years ago was that they were going to do much more for less, but as you know, with anything, it's a business model, budgets balloon and they grow. And they, they've, uh, uh, increased the market share here. Um, however, it is projected that within the next few years, the assault on human intelligence and human capital is going to be so great that you have people questioning whether or not even getting an advanced, to get, getting a degree or an advanced degree is worth it. But in the next three years, Walmart to compete with Amazon will totally be phasing out all of its human capital and it'll go fully automated. You're talking about electric grids, electric vehicles, electric cars, electric things, all these different things. You're talking about even an assault on human intelligence because now you have chat GPT or chat BT or whatever it is. A person doesn't have to think or read or, 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 or do anything for themselves. AI is advancing this. Um, you just saw yesterday when they put out in New York, the robot dog to help with, um, crime fighting. All right. You see all the times the different robots because they're looking for better soldiers, um, you know, in the military. Um, so with that being said, and that's the way the world is leaning, even to the point where Elon Musk is working with Neuralink to try to have your, be able to bridge your brainwaves and your thoughts. Is a, is one point three billion dollars a sound investment for traditional education?
Uh, I guess I'll, I'll lead off the response to that question. Thank you again. Nothing. That's an excellent way because I always think move, thinking, considering the future is most important. And one of the classes, the course I teach is AP Environment through Science. And one thing I tell my, tell our students, it doesn't matter the inventions we make or the technologies we create. At the end of the day, it's about how humans use that technology and resources. There's always someone in the back room controlling the robot, the robot, al- although it's art- artificial intelligence. There's someone that is responsible for the programming. And so that's why interacting with each other is still important. That's why investing one point three billion dollars in our education system is important. We cannot forget the world existed before twenty years ago, before the first phone was created. There were other methods, alternatives of education where humans had to adapt to the society around them. And right now, just because we have technology, doesn't mean the adaptation isn't still there. Evolution is still a natural concept where, that we will have to change to our environment around us. And so what happens if the next pandemic occurs? When power lines go out because of a natural disaster that also occurs during that pandemic? And so we have to start remembering, we can't predict fully what our future looks like. But we can give our tools, give ourselves the tools necessary, which is knowledge. If we don't have the resources today, what can we use right in front of us to get to tomorrow? So that's why I believe always valuing human intelligence over artificial technology. A car battery even dies on the worst day possible. But there's always someone there that can figure out how to get the car moving. And so that is the example, what we need to push and build a community, the village that will always overcome any obstacle we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, um, just time check, um, we have about four minutes left in this broadcast. So I'm going to ask you guys to just contribute at least a minute to the response and then I'm going to let you guys talk to.
Oh, I'll, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the time. So, um, I, I think the, the answer to that, I mean, it's a, it's a fantastic question, right? And, and I think the answer to that will be, um, not only locally, but, but statewide and nationally as we advance AI. I think there, there are, there are three things to that. First of all, um, I, I have the opportunity of, uh, leading the robotics team at my school, um, for the first time ever. And what I realize is how important coding is in computer science, uh, especially in this realm. And it's something that we don't have as part of our curriculum at all. And it's something that we should and we should invest in and kids should know. Because if you can create an app, if you can code an app, that can make you, that can make you some money, um, from the mileage that you already have. I think secondly, um, we, we have to, you know, when we talk about standards, that's on a state level, um, which is a, a larger fight. But there, there are absolutely things that we are teaching that are inadequate and out of date, right? For example, when I was teaching algebra, we had to teach, um, some operations and scientific notation. I have friends that work at NASA who were like, why are you teaching your kids that? We use computers for that all the time, right? I, I, and that's a larger conversation for the state. And I think third is, is going to our families and, and asking like, hey, what are some things that you do want us to teach? As the board, we have the opportunity to adjust schedules and incorporate some of the things that kids don't learn from a textbook, but they learn from experiences from the people around us. And I think those are strong investments that we can make in our city and it totally within our purview and control as a board member.
Thank you. Thank you, Tommy.
Even as president of parent council, I had partnered with Rutgers University Newark, the Newark, uh, campus to bring girls who code STEM. So when you think about technology, like my, like my teammate said, coding plays a big part. When I think about my job, New York City Transit Authority, they try to go audit, automate it. And time and time again, we see that the system is not working because they fall back to us, the tower operators, the train operators and the conductors. So although we might have technology in the future, technology is not working well and they have to come back to the people. So it's important for our kids to learn coding, to do STEM because there's someone, but like my, like my, uh, colleague said, teammate said, there is someone behind the control of it. And last time I checked, my sister's a human resource director and they're hiring for engineering. So although technology is going, but engineering positions are still there.
Okay, excellent. Well said. Tronda?
Okay, so I just want to thank all of you for your wonderful comments and your deep care, passion and compassion for the young people. As an educator, I, I feel everything you're saying about the improvements. I just want to give our audience a second just for some closing remarks about why uh, they heard wonderful responses to our questions, but why should they vote for you? Half a minute. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Right. I see him smiling big guy.
You can, because I'm a Newark native looking to place other students, connecting the youth to the older generation. This team, this is the best way to go to put our Newark students forward.
Thank you. Love that. How about, um, Ms. Johnson, please?
The reason why you should vote for me because the board doesn't have anybody speaking for special needs students on the board. And no one better to speak for a special needs student than a parent who tackled these complex issues on a day to day basis. We need someone on the board that understands that evaluations, IEP, five oh four plan, wraparound plans, resources are needed and funding is needed for these special needs students. You should vote for me because I am the voice of special need parents and I will get the job done.
Thank you so much. And I just have to say, more parents need to understand with the neurotoxicity of the water, we have, uh, more young people around our state, around our country who actually have been classified because of these medical conditions from the environmental racism of our water supplies being contaminated. So Mr. Luna, I'm going to let you get that last one in there.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for hosting this forum and, and allowing us to present our ideas and our visions. Um, for anybody that, uh, for everybody that was on here, I, I think it's one that you important to, to vote, bring five people with you. Um, and vote for this team, vote for us because the status quo is not working. The status quo is sending thousands and millions of dollars into courtrooms. It is giving us twenty six percent of kids who are on grade level in ELA, twelve percent in math. It is allowing un- non accountability and non transparency to permeate through our district to the point where they're going to ask us for a billion dollars more, right? On top of the billion dollars that they have. This is a team that is independent. We come with our receipts. We know what we're talking about. And we are from our community, for our community and by our community to ensure that kids always move forward. So we hope that you come out, put it in your phones right now, put it on a calendar, call five friends, make sure you do it together. And then we can all go to Chateau afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to, uh, let everyone know who's listening. Please share this video, folks who are paying attention. Let them know that these candidates took their wonderful time out this evening to sit and share their perspectives. I feel empowered and excited about the possibilities for our people of Newark. I'm from Newark. I grew up in Newark and, uh, I, I love this. So thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. A good night.
Thank you.